I now reconvene to the Marion County School Board at 6:00 PM. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Production Coordinator, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
I am thrilled to share these two students with you. They don't even have to say a single word to be our inspiration for this evening. That's because in thirteen years of school, and that's kindergarten through 12th grade, they did not miss a single day of school. I don't even know how that's possible, other than they went to school when they didn't feel well, or mom and dad put them out the door and made them go, or they just wanted to go. My guess is it's the latter. So, I'm just in awe of these two students, and I know that they have tremendously successful futures ahead of them. There's certainly not an employer in this county that wouldn't want somebody who shows up for work every day. And I would like to introduce to you Keniah Niemore and Emily Wolf. And I'm gonna ask them to come forward, they can stand here beside me, so the camera can see them. They're a little nervous about the cameras. Just to share some information with you, remember that's 100% attendance, 2,340 days out of 2,340 days of school. Keniah graduates, this is Keniah. She graduated from Vanguard High School earlier this month, and in 2001 she enrolled in our school district as a kindergartner at Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary. She also attended Osceola Middle and Howard Middle Schools, and she's eighteen years old, and this fall she will study biology at the University of Florida.
Alright, good choice.
She is the daughter of Ken and Peggy Niemore of Ocala, and I think Peggy's mom is in the audience tonight. Emily, who is standing beside me, graduated from Westport High School earlier this month. In 2001, she enrolled in our district as a kindergarten student at Madison Street Academy. She's eighteen years old, and she also attended Westport Middle, back when Westport Middle existed, and then transferred over to Liberty Middle, and this fall she will study accounting at the University of North Florida. She's the daughter of Jerry and Angela Wolf of Ocala as well. So before they lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I wanna steal just a little bit of their spotlight and recognize two other students in their four years of high school. They never missed a single day, and for high schoolers, that's pretty tremendous as well. And they were eligible, of course, to win that free car that was given away. Those two seniors were, or are, excuse me, Joshua Beckwith from Bellevue High School and Jody Weber of Denalien High School. So, I know you guys will have comments to share with these lovely ladies, but I'm gonna ask them to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Board, I know we have some people that would like to just say a few words.
Both of you, I am so proud of you, you know, from kindergarten, not missing a day, that's exceptional, you know? And I kinda wanna say, I hope you take that into the workforce too, and at college, because if you miss a class, you miss so much, you know? But I'm extremely proud, I was at both your graduations and was looking for you, you know, and I remember you, Keniah, I remember you so much. And I know I saw you, Emily, on the side, but I just wanted, I wanted to say then, thank you for setting such a positive example that says, "School is a good place to be at."
Thank you.
Good.
I'm also very, very proud of both of you for, I hope you stayed healthy, assume you did, didn't come to school and spread all those germs, you know? But I'm also very pleased that you're staying in Florida for universities that you chose in the state of Florida, and hopefully you'll come back and be a part of Marion County, and we hope to see you as future leaders of our county, and congratulations, good luck to you.
And I'm very proud of you. Also, my children, two of my three children, went to school at Madison Street. It's interesting, one went to N.H. Jones and one went to Madison Street, that says a lot for the magnet programs to keep you really, really engaged at school. Unfortunately, you know, my children were there ahead of you. Thank goodness you did not follow their footsteps. They're all okay now, they're all college graduates and all have their own homes, but trust me, we did not have great attendance sometimes with the boys, with the boys. I was telling Mr. Crawford, I say, "We don't have any boys up here."
We have in the past.
Okay, I won't be a feminist then, but congratulations, so proud of you.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to find the right words, 'cause I'm sitting here still in awe, you know, having grown up too, and all the things that you run across in your lifetime that will cause you maybe not to wanna go to school that day, whether it's sickness or whatever it is, so I'm just ultimately impressed, I wish you the best, you have made us proud.
And those are great genetics you must have.
Ladies, I just wanna say, on behalf of all your colleagues, congratulations to you, and the thing I will say to you, make sure you remember the Milling Foundation. The Milling Foundation, did you take advantage of it? If you don't, talk with your counselor, because the Milling Foundation is something there for any of our students that graduate from one of our schools that go to the University of Florida. Take advantage of it. And for everybody here, this is one of our products right here, and this is what we're most proud of, is the fact that we have kids that came to school, they worked hard, they behaved, and good things happened. So, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Mrs. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, with the exception of items C-21, C-23, and C-26, which have been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 24, 2014 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation? A motion and a second.
So moved, second.
It was motion by Ms. Ely, second by Mrs. Borton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 22, 2014 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the May 27, 2014 School Board Meeting? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
It was a motion by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Borton. Are there any corrections or additions in the minute? Send none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt a resolution number 14-04 declaring 0.69 acres of Dillon Parcel unnecessary for educational purposes?
So moved, second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford and second by Mrs. Borton, any discussion?
Move the question.
Move the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt a revised Board Policy 6.92, Health Insurance Premium? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
It was moved by Ms. Borton, second by Ms. Ely. Mrs. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, this board policy has been revised to clarify the process and procedures, update statutory authority and laws implemented.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the revised board policy? Send none, board. Call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt a new job classification description for Assistant Records Manager? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Crawford and second by Ms. Ely, Ms. Ely. Mrs. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, this new job classification description will allow the Employment Services Division to hire an Assistant Records Manager to assist the Records Manager. Due to state reporting and Skyward data input and data mining becoming more complex, it is necessary to have a second person in this area.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the new job classification description? Send none, board. Call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt a new job classification description for the Maintenance Part Technician? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Borton, second by Ms. Ely. Mrs. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, this new job classification description is recommended to comply with the 2014-15 Staffing Plan.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wish to address the new job classification description for Maintenance Parts Technician? Send none, board.
Call the question.
It's Borton, call the question. Okay, call the question. Motion second. Do I get a second?
Second. You already have a motion.
Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items C-21, C-23, and C-26, which have been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, and item C-20, C-22, and C-25, which have been placed on the regular agenda for discussion? May I have a motion?
So moved, second.
And a second by Mr. Crawford, Mrs. Borton and Mr. Crawford. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to modify for review of the Master Works Service Contract with Citrus, Levy, Marion Regional Workforce Development, Board Incorporated, Korea Service, Citrus, Levy, and Marion? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford and second by Ms. Borton. Mr. Crawford, you withdrew this item for discussion.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and board, I withdrew this item, and then there's one other item I withdrew, and strictly, it's a procedural matter, I wanna make sure that it is noted in the minutes that, if you remember, the recap sheet in the front of the actual item mentioned that there is no cost to the school district, and I just want to make sure that gets put in the minutes, because I have seen, how's the best way to describe it, mission creep in the past, where suddenly there is a cost factor that comes back to the board, and it wasn't something that we had initially agreed to when we agreed to this matter. So that's all I'm asking for, I have no, I think the program is a marvelous program and...
Okay, thank you. Board, any other discussion? Call for the vote?
You're just making that in the minutes.
I'm just, the fact that it is noted in the minutes that we...
No cost.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the relocation and setup of Marion County Public School on Portable, on the Westport High School campus, funding through a donation by the Westport High School Band Boosters Club? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
Moved by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Borton. Mr. Crawford, you withdrew this item.
Oh, okay, yeah, this was the other one, there was another one I was thinking of, but I had put it back on the agenda, and again, it's the same rationale. The band boosters very generously have donated the money, my understanding is the portable's already been moved, and I just wanna make sure that that was included in the minutes.
Okay, any additional discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the 2014-2016 Technology Plan? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford, second by Ms. Borton. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item?
Yes, and I'm looking to see if this is the contract that had the, I'm gonna make sure we got the right one pulled.
You talking about the bandwidth?
No, this isn't the one, this isn't it. No, but that's okay. Oh, this is not the right one, it was the, it was the one on the technical contract, but that's okay.
This is the only, is this what you told me that you wrote for?
No.
Technology plan, page three?
Well, maybe I'm not pulling it up right then. Maybe it looks different on my computer. Anyway, the one that I was pulling was the one that talked on page, on page three, and page thirty-one, and page thirty-three, and page twenty-one. On the plan, it was talking about the Sunshine State Standards and the Next Generation Standards. I don't know that this is the right one of the, I think there was two of Mr. Hanson's.
Thirty-one is it?
Were there two, Mr. Hanson, or I'm just not reading this paper right now?
Come on up, Mr. Hanson.
Okay. Because it might not have gotten...
I believe this is the correct document.
Okay, I see it, I'm seeing it now, it's just, looking on this computer's different than looking on my iPad, I guess, y'all know how I am.
Yeah, page three, one point one.
Yeah, this is it, just looks different, big. One thing that I think we need to do is be real, real careful, when we, when we put these contracts out, we need to read them. This talks about promoting the effective use of technology to implement the Next Generation Sunshine Standards Common Core and to improve performance of all students. It's not Next Generation Standards anymore, it's Sunshine Standards, and it's not Sunshine Six Standards, it's Florida Standards, and it's not Common Core, it's Florida Standards. If you go all the way down to the signature page, it even talks about it at the very bottom. Let me get down there. Where the final signature is, where Mr. Tom signs and where Mr. James signs, it even says, "For the implementation of Common Core." So, we need to make sure that we correct that, and this contract, this paperwork should have Florida Standards, not Sunshine State Standards, not Next Generation Standards, but Florida Standards and not Common Core. Just need to have the document correct.
If you're gonna check the document, you need to offer amendment to strike.
Okay.
Those terms and replace with Florida's.
Okay, so can I do that? Can I offer amendment to correct the document?
Right.
And correct the document, so that in, it's on page three, page thirty-one, page thirty-three, and page twenty-one, there's reference to different standards that are not at all what we have now?
Three, thirty-one, thirty-three.
I'm sorry, yep, page three, page twenty-one, page thirty-one, and page thirty-three. Page thirty-three is a signing document, the very last page, where it says, where we get the signatures. Anyway, I would just like to strike those and correct the phrase to be the Florida Standards, because that's the correct terminology.
We'll scan the entire document.
Yeah, we'll make a change.
Ensure the entire document, there may be other references in there, we'll make sure it does say Florida Standards.
Okay, I'll second it.
We just need to be careful when we're putting this stuff together and have someone read through it. Okay?
It was motion that we have, that Ms. Stacy's corrections we made, made, and the superintendent has agreed to do that, and the second by Mr. Crawford. In reference to the amendment, all in favor of the amendment being amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Got one more vote?
Ms. Ely.
Okay, the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the original amendment with the addition of the amendment?
So moved.
We've already got a motion.
Yeah, motion on that.
Okay.
The 2014-16 Technology Plan has amended.
Has amended.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following donation? $1,000 to Forest High School from the market of Marion, $1,000 to Forest High School from Bart Blessing Management LLC. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Crawford.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Before we go any further, I would like to have, Mr. Crawford, if you would do the thank you.
Thank you, and it's always a pleasure to thank the people who have so generously supported public education in this county. We have two fine examples tonight, so on behalf of the board, I say, "Thank you for all that you do."
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Meeting reminds us, there's a special work session scheduled for Wednesday, June 5, at 2014, at 10:00 PM. The purpose of the work session is to hold a conference call with Attorney O'Brien to continue discussion, discussing on the hiring process of an in-house attorney. The next Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for Thursday, July 17, 2014, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to receive the school planning update, including impact fee study and student projection, draft of the five-year plan, proposal for joint use of recreation facilities with the Marion County, Marion County, and revision to the Board Policy 5.20, student assignment as related to opening enrollment. Please make notes, so we will be aware of the meetings.
I think you said 10:00 PM.
AM, sorry, AM. Good job.
We're not meeting at 10:00 PM.
AM.
That's a good thing.
Okay, I will now ask board members for their comments, and I'll start with Mr. Crawford.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, I've got three items tonight, and the two of them are really directed towards the superintendent, and just in the course of expressing a concern, I know that there is a desire to change how we're handling part of the ESE program, renaming some of the people that are in that program, and also reducing the number, and I'm concerned that we're, that we may be saving money, not, I'm not concerned we'd be saving money, but I'm concerned that in the course of saving money, are we really going to maintain the same efficiency that we currently have, or how is this program going to enhance what we're doing in the oversight of those programs out there? So, it's just a concern, I'm all in favor of saving money, but I don't want us to, you know, fall over a mountain trying to avoid a molehill, and that's what I worry about sometimes. The other item is, and I know this is not, that's not something that has come out of your office, Mr. Superintendent, this is actually, it's something that's come out of DOD, the Department of Defense is cutting back on how they want to fund the ROTC program, I know two of the branches have said they're only gonna pay for X number of months, the third branch of the school programs we have in this county have agreed to continue the, I guess, eleven months that we're currently operating on, am I correct on that? The only worry that I have in making the cutback is, let's not forget that DOD has made a run at us two years in a row, asking us to willingly give back some of those ROTC programs, and I would just wanna make sure that we do not give them an opportunity to use this as saying, "Okay, you won't fund it for the ten months, we wanna pay for eleven, but you only wanna do," so therefore, we're pulling those programs. So I'm just saying, as we're looking at this, let's make sure that, again, we're not foolish in our actions and give them a chance to get into, because we're one of the few counties in the state that have a ROTC program at every one of our high schools, and one of my former colleagues on this board, Jim Kelly, worked very hard and tirelessly to make sure that happened, and it wasn't, it wasn't easy, and that was even when defense was giving away these programs a lot more freely. Now, you, the chances of getting one are almost nil, so I'd hate to lose the uniqueness that we have here in Marion County, especially when you look at, you know, fifteen hundred children are involved in those programs across our seven high schools, so it is just a wonderful opportunity for them. So I just, you know, wanted to bring that up. And board, tonight, I originally had pulled this item off the agenda, but I'm not, I'm not willing to get in the way in any way that possible in our move from a outside council to an indoor council. The only thing I would advise, if you, if you look at, and I realize this is a temporary position that we voted for tonight, which is to bridge the gap until we have somebody in place and they've been able to decide the staff person that they, that they would like to have, but I'm concerned about if you, if you take what we're going to be paying them... that it, it equates out to a, a higher rate than I think that we actually need to. And remember, one of the benefits of, of, of going to the in-house is, and outside of having this person available to us, uh, you know, forty hours a week without having the meter running. But the fact that we were also going to save some, I, I believe there were some savings that we could, uh, gain from this and then redirect into, obviously, we, we know all the different places that have savings, no matter how small they may be, but they can go. So I just hope that when we, when we do have this discussion, it may be tomorrow even, of how we're setting some of the, uh, the cost levels that we, let's go in below what we may think these things are gonna cost us. Get, we're sticking our toe in the water. Let's, let's see how it, it, it works out for us. And then there always can be adjustments in, in the future for the, the pay on this. And I'm a firm believer, you, you know, you get what you, uh, pay for, but I think we're gonna be, uh, I think we're gonna be very pleasantly surprised with the number of people that are going to, uh, apply for, uh, this job. So that's my, that's my only concern. And like I said, when I saw the numbers, I just, you know, did my quick calculation and it's, it's, uh, it's actually more than what we would probably pay a, a person that is slotted in the, in the current, uh, staffing, um, hierarchy. So it's, uh, it's just one of my pet peeves.
Mr. Crawford, didn't we come to consensus as to the salary range, um, when we had our last work session here with Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, but I'm still concerned, I, I just.
Aren't there advertisements out there now and I know, um?
No, we, we had to wait until tomorrow's meeting.
Okay.
And then they would go out after that. So I would just, everybody would sleep on it, uh, tonight. And, and, you know, if you don't agree with me, you know, I, that's fine. I, 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 I'm just trying to err on the side of caution and, 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 you know.
Ms. Stacy?
Yeah, I've gone through some of my surveys and said that I would share some of the information that I found and thought this was a good time to do it since we're going on a closing time for a couple of weeks. We're gonna be off and vacation, everything. And I wanna thank Marion County's employees for their great response. So many people have called me because they were afraid to put anything in writing. My phone has rung off its hook for at least the first four weeks because teachers will call me and talk to me on the phone. I, in fact, I have a meeting on Thursday with teachers in their home because they're afraid to meet with me even in a public place. And so many, many of my contacts have been verbal with people. But, um, I also wanna thank Mr. Callahan. He put my address in, in the, um, in the newspaper. And actually, I got a great contact that called me that I was able to forward some information onto the school system and to Councilman, uh, City Councilman Malaver that probably saved the taxpayers possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees down the road for something that I found out because someone got my name out of the paper, thanks to you. That was a complete outsider out in the city. And this has gone on, um, between the city council and the school board to possibly really end up, at the end of the day, saving us a lot of legal fees on both sides. But what it has taught me about our education system, I could not have learned any other way. Tonight, I want to narrow down the largest concerns into five areas based upon the information I have gathered. Interestingly, it totally dovetails with what our district surveys stated as I shared with you last week. It's just a little more organized thoughts this week. They've been on a district shelf conveniently for quite a while collecting dust, and I'm glad they're now off the shelf. My concerns are teacher intimidation, staff development issues, school discipline problems, lack of respect shown for teachers, FCAT reading issues, and the need to return music, art, and P.E. because we are destroying creativity in our young minds. My first concern was teacher intimidation. In many instances, teachers got together and they actually wrote me group letters. I would have, I don't know how many teachers were involved, but they would send me a master letter of, of a bunch of teachers altogether. In other instances, great research packages were put together for me and they were sent my way. Then in other situations, teachers met with me in their homes and I'm continuing to meet with teachers in their homes. They were actually afraid to meet with me in public places. And that is, and the fear of backlash, I don't understand. And Mr. Tomlin, I know some of this is, is just not real. I know some of it is perception, and I know that you're gonna get a handle on some of this for us. But, um, the things that I have found up have been clearly backed up not only from my surveys, but also from the district's own survey, which shows that thirty-six percent of the elementary teachers are fearful to share professional opinions at their school. Mrs. Ely, obviously, since you stated last week that you did not agree with my concerns over teachers feeling intimidated, proclaiming no one is giving you this info that I am receiving, simply shows me that maybe they still aren't ready to trust you and talk to you and they remember you as a principal. Because our own surveys in the district show exactly what I have said. It's not my writing, it's the district's own surveys. You can disagree with me till the cows come home, but the surveys say exactly what I have been saying for a year. We were told that they surveyed pa- parents for the Title I, so teachers also were done at that same time. But we were not given a copy of those surveys last year. We had no clue. In fact, when I offered to survey, um, the teachers, I just assumed that the surveys, when Mr. Tomlin said we had done electronic surveys, that those surveys strictly spoke about curriculum things and maybe not the type of items that, um, I wanted to do. And so I stupidly just assumed that. And finally, just out of my own curiosity, I requested those surveys and, and found out they were really what I really, really wanted all along. Had I just known or had someone shared them with us, we could've been a whole year ahead on, of what we're doing now. My second largest issue has been that staff development, especially at the elementary level, was obviously not serving its costily intended purpose in every school. And my letters from teachers back that up as being the concern of many of the teachers. Well, bless Pete, and lo and behold, your survey shows that nearly one in four elementary teachers feel they do not get the support needed following the professional development activities. Besides that, the students' test scores also support my position. What this tells me is that things are working at some schools, but not at others. If one in four schools has a problem, then that equates to six elementary schools where something just isn't right. And if you wanna make it easier to view the big picture in, you can look at it like that. My third concern is that discipline is ineffective in some schools while working in others. The only question on the county survey that I could connect in any way was the question asking if the question went like this. The school, if the school administration consistently and fairly enforces the code of student conduct and overall, one in five teachers on our school survey says no. Not many middle school teachers responded. But of those that did respond, sixty-six percent of those said it was not consistently enforced. It was a low number that re, that replied back because seven hundred in some areas replied and like seventy in that area replied of the middle, I mean, seven hundred overall replied, but there were seventy in this area. But when you do a sampling and political polling, um, if it's guaranteed voters, then that sampling is, is usually a, a, a very promising thing that that speaks for pretty much the whole of the voters. Because we'll do a national, a national survey at a, in a presidential polling and maybe only polled seven hundred people and try to get a, a look, a snapshot at what's happening. And so really, you know, seventy or eighty teachers, um, that we know are teachers because they answered on the school board survey is a good sampling. Sixty-six percent of those middle school teachers do not fair, believe that things are consistently and fairly enforced on our school, code of school, students, code of conduct. So, my fourth concern is that I have been saying since day one of my campaign trail, and I've never changed my mantra since being elected. It is that teachers have become scapegoats of a failed education system, or we will call it a culture. And we need to return them to pillars of the community as they were when I was a child. Okay? On item number nineteen, on our own school survey, it clearly shows that nearly one in three elementary teachers do not feel valued at their school. And one in four of all the groupings do not feel valued at their school, but I think we can all fix this. All of the things above regarding student discipline and fearful of express, or that they are fearful of expressing their professional opinion totally supports this answer and supports my accusations since November two thousand twelve, when I hit this board seat. My fifth concern is reading FCAT scores declining, which recent FCAT scores back up. Also, teachers being asked to cheat and give students a fifty-five percent score. Whether they earn it or not is very concerning to me. Quite a few teachers shared that with me. I don't know why this school board is shocked about the recent FCAT scores because teachers were warning me about this all year long. You can't turn a teacher's classroom world upside down and expect to have no unintended consequences. I discussed that FCAT issue last week, but let us discuss a teacher's letter to me. I will not mention the school on television, but I will tell you the school, Mr. Tomlin, privately. A teacher writes, "Mrs. Stacy, I am so glad that finally someone is interested in what really goes on in our schools. I have wanted to write the star banner, but worried about job security. At my school, nothing really works, as you will soon see." And my note is that this, this letter was given to me in April, and test scores hadn't, I mean, tests were just being, just starting. And so there was no inform, you know, she had no way of knowing what the outcome would be. And this, this school has declined academically dramatically. Just as she told me that the school was gonna do poorly in FCAT, they declined dramatically. And this is the school, Mr. Langford, I spoke with you about today. And she also talked about the teachers being dropped, encouraged to drop that fifty-five percent, to the fif, drop a fifty-five percent into the grade book. She says, "I have refused to do this, but other teachers cave in and do it all the time. I view it as unethical, this is cheating, but yet the students are punished for cheating. I actually heard an A.P. at our school tell a teacher that it is unfair to the poor little kid who always fails. PBS is a great idea and it works at some schools, but when the principal refuses to support the team with their decision-making, then it becomes a waste of time." So now for some topics straight from the teacher's letter. Let's see. And anyway, there's some other things that goes on and on and on. But I'd like to address something that one of them kinda. No, I'm not gonna read it. I've got little highlight thing, I'm not, I've got like four minutes. First of all, this teacher says, "I'd like to thank you for giving us the overworked, underpaid, and certainly underappreciated teachers of Marion County the opportunity to tell someone this. I am sure that you understand that by year you're doing this, you will be branded as a troublemaker and not a team player. The powers that be will be out to get you, Mrs. Stacy, and they will use every dirty trick in the book to discredit and beseech your name. I have found that unless you agree with the administration and put on a happy face and pretend that the emperor really does have new clothes, then you are labeled as being negative, not a team player, or the ultimate, you don't really care about the needs of the students. Reality and true problem solving is not in the playbook." She's been teaching twenty years and she, you know, she shared that concern. But then I have an interesting thing from one teacher. She says, "As long as complaining teachers can come up with suggestions for solutions to issues, there is no problem speaking up. Complaining just because you are unhappy or you don't like your job is just not productive for anyone. So I appreciate that teacher's comments. Being part of the solution is always better than being part of the problem. However, I have worked for a few principals in the past that would try to get you back for disagreeing with them. But the new crop of principals I have worked with lately don't seem to be so much that way. And the union has given teachers a voice and a path to settle grievances with much more respect now." One thing that I would like to read that Mrs., that y'all might like. Also, we have, of course, they're talking about the stop sending students to the next grade level. This is over and over if they haven't mastered the current standards. This teacher says, when I ask what could I do to, to balance morale, she says, "If you just continue to keep in touch and on top of what directly affects us in the classroom, then over half the battle has been fought. So much of the disparity of jobs and duties, favoritism and entitlement happens, and that's so much." So, um, but I'd like to end with a comment that a teacher put at the bottom of hers, a concerned teacher, and she, I'm not even reading what she said, but she wrote, "It is hard to imagine a more stupid or more dangerous way of making decisions than by putting those decisions in the hands of people who pay no price for being wrong. When our school board is wrong about decisions we make, the teachers become the scapegoats." But I'd like to close with something really positive, a great letter from a teacher. This was dated four fifteen fourteen. Dear Mrs. Stacy, first, thank you for asking us for some input. I really don't have any complaints. I feel honored to work as an elementary teacher in this great school district. I have been blessed. This one makes me sad, I mean, not sad, it makes me happy cry, makes happy tears. I have been blessed with a wonderful principal at my school. She is very supportive and never has threatened a bad, a bad evaluation for making discipline referrals. I feel very supported by my administrators at my school. Certainly, if a student is disrespectful to me, I know I have the support of my dean and my administrative team. Cell phones fortunately are not an issue at elementary schools yet, thank goodness, so I have no input for you on that topic. My experience with PBS has also been positive. It has not, it's not anything new to me because having school-wide expectations clearly defined for all students is a solid practice we have employed at our school for many years, and overall, I support it. On the topic of our school psychologists, behavior psychologists, and social worker, I do not know what we would do without them. They are fantastic support at our school. Teachers just can't do it all, and these folks make things happen for students in need. With regard to Common Core, I have received some training on this, but I feel I need much more. We are teaching Common Core now, and I am doing the best I can, but I believe it would benefit for a little more training on this important topic. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share with you directly and anonymously, sincerely, a happy elementary teacher. So thank you.
I appreciate you closing with, uh, that letter from the teacher. I know that you've got a lot of letters that you've received. What, what I heard, and we've got a lot of issues in the school system, we always will, Ms. Stacy, and we're always working to find solutions to the issues that we have. We can't fix it with, you know, you reading these letters to all of us. We, we can't fix it that way, but we need to be aware of what's going on in our schools and what issues we need to address and can address and can, can work on to improve. I did want to, um, share with you what four of us went to today. This was the, um, the annual meeting for the Public School Foundation. I wanna, um, share a successful morning. Mr. Tomlin went with us also. This is the Public School Foundation. I am so proud that we have this in Marion County. They had their annual meeting and they, uh, shared what they're doing with all of their programs, take stock in children. Uh, we had a, a senior high girl who, um, got up and spoke and she's, um, she, she had a mentor from eighth grade on and she's, um, graduated. She got a scholarship for John Hopkins University. I was so proud of her and she was so eloquent when she spoke. Uh, Tools for Teaching is a, a place in, um, Marion County where teachers who need pencils, paper, any kind of tools can go there and it's totally free. Coats for Kids, that's something else that they focus on. So parents, if you have coats that your children are growing, please hold on to them so you can make a donation for, uh, we don't need them now, for sure, with the temperatures in the nineties, but we will in the fall. And Coupons for Education, uh, they, uh, that's run by the foundation. All of that money gets put back in schools. As also the Grants for Great Ideas, um, I was part of that when I was a teacher and I think it's great to be able to give some of that foundational money back to our teachers who have really good ideas that they're implementing in the cla, classroom, need a little bit more money. And last is our Golden Apple Teacher of the Year. And our Golden Apple Teacher spoke this morning. He was great. He's, um, he was the one who implemented Tools for Teaching. So, um, thank you, Public School Foundation, and Judy Zanetti and Lauren DiOrio for putting on an excellent program and a great report to, um, to the county as to what, what you all are doing to help our kids. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. I too, uh, attended the, uh, Public Education, uh, Foundation's meeting, and it, it was very rewarding. And, um, I wanna thank Judy Zanetti and, uh, Lauren DiOrio for the fine work that they do. But I have a couple of things I'd like to talk to you about. First, I want to say to you, Ms. Stacy, you brought a lot of information to us and the only way that we can even remember all that you talked about is you put it in the report, bring it to us, because awareness is important. And thank you. Now, I wanted to, um, bring to you, I don't know if you attended, this is for the board member, just to give you a copy, the information I've been giving to, to you about the Lexile reading scores. I know many of us are aware of it already. But we went to a, a conference and they brought it here to Marion County and it was over in the superintendent and administration. They graciously held this over at M.T.I. And I wanna read a couple pages of it, the Lexile reading. And it says that, that- And I want to read a couple pages of it, the Lexile reading, and it says that the average high school student Lexile reading is at nine hundred, but in order to be even in agriculture, you have to have a Lexile reading at fifteen-ten. So, part of Common Core was to implement changes to make that Lexile reading score...reading level go up, and I wanted to share with you, I'm gonna give each board member a packet of the information. I'm sure most of us did attend, but I just wanted to bring it back to your attention. And some of this has already been phased in to some of the testing, so it makes a difference and to you. Could you pass this down to Ms. Flock? Okay, and then the last thing, we all attended the FSBA Conference, Annual Conference in Tampa, and it was such a well-attended event, but it was also very informational. I got a lot out of it, and when I came back, I rushed to talk to Mr. Langford and talk to Mr. Filonella about some of the things that we learned. And, Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to present it to you to see if you could get more information, please, on the Positive Pathways Program that Orange County has initiated in their school system, which offers an alternative...alternative schools and expulsions, and it's for first-time offenders. And it would be something that I think would be...make the students and parents more responsible for any infraction. This program offers behavior modification, counseling, parent parental counseling, victim the letters of apologies for any offenses, and it's really targeting drugs, it's also targeting sexual offenders, but we could do so much more with that program where we could look at that, Mr. Superintendent. I would sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Ely.
I have nothing to report, except I've enjoyed my first night.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Crawford, going back to your first two comments in reference to the restructuring in our ESE department, we would not have done that, but I do, unless we think it's gonna reap rewards and benefits for us, I'm convinced that we will be much more efficient, and you will see that as time progresses. And in reference to your comments about ROTC, I couldn't agree with you more that it is absolutely fantastic program. And again, as you have already said, I don't know of any district that has more than one high school that has ROTC at all at their high school. So, we're not...we don't want to do anything to upset any of those two particular programs. And, Mrs. Boynton, in reference to your comments about the Orange County program, sorry, but I've already beat you to it. We listened to a very similar presentation with the superintendents that we met with at the same meeting. From that meeting, I sent Mark Villanueva a note in reference to researching that, and he's already been in touch with the Orange County personnel, and I'll be bringing that to you and sharing that with you at a workshop. And it's really good stuff. I agree with you. A couple of other notes, Mr. Chairman. You know, we are having some summer school programs going on. We have middle school unit recovery going on and high school credit recovery. Just a couple of notes here, in the very first week alone, we have two hundred and sixty-two different middle school students who attended in that week. Nine students completed one of those courses, and here's the good news of that, of those nine, four of those were eighth graders, and now after going to this unit recovery, they are now ninth graders and have been promoted to high school. And likewise, in the high school arena, we have two hundred and seventy-two different students attending. Twenty-six students in that first week have already completed a credit recovery class that they'd already started, and twenty, twenty students are now high school graduates after completing that one. So, that's pretty good news. Along that same line of good news about successful students, through the Community Technical and Adult Education Program, just in the last school year, school year two thousand thirteen, we had four hundred and thirty-six individuals receive their GED. That's ranging from eighteen to, I don't know what the upper age limits with, pretty fantastic results there. You know that I invited a number of teachers to come and meet with me to discuss FCAT strategies and what went right. I am happy to share with you that we have invited three hundred and forty-six different teachers that we've identified to come to Forest High School on July the eighth. We have three different two-hour sessions. We have facilitators. We're going to be presenting those teachers with their own data. We'll have it already printed out for them, and we hope to have a report back on those good strategies soon after that time. Then two more things. One, many of you know Deb Miller. Deb Miller has served our district faithfully as a teacher, a curriculum specialist, and in her most recent life has been working in our Employment Services Division. Deb is retiring. You know that because we've already done some facilitating for helping train someone to replace her, but this Thursday afternoon at three-thirty to five-thirty, I know she'd appreciate you swinging by as we have a little celebration for her in the ESD office. And so that's this Thursday from three-thirty to five-thirty. And then finally, I just got this information. You will see this on the news, I'm sure, but I'll embarrass Teresa Boston Ellis in the back row back there. Yes, she can smile. And this is powerful news, guys, and this is why I feel so comfortable in what I...the information that I receive, and I hope you feel very comfortable with the information you receive from our finance department also. Here's the headlines. For the fourteenth year in a row, the Finance Department of Marion County Public Schools receives national recognition for its accountability and transparency efforts by an independent agency. Congratulations, Teresa and your staff. We trust those folks implicitly, and they make our jobs much easier. Thank you, sir.
Lieutenant, we got off at evil thirteen.
Yes, sir. That was common. They weren't gonna say a word until they got their letter.
I can say I've never called that office and not gotten help.
One of the things that I just would like to just bring to the board and bring some information to you in reference to where we are. I know that the superintendent said that he would bring in a six-step plan to address our needs in reference to our scores and things like that. And one of the things that I would just like to just make all of us aware of in terms of where we are is that we have a strategic plan, and most of us know that we have a strategic plan. One of the things that I would like to add to our plan, and one of the things I would like to say more than anything else, I would like to have an accountability piece. And one of the thing that I would like to ask some of my board members, have you all ever worked with a balanced scorecard? Have you heard of a balanced scorecard? Mr. Crawford, it's a business...it's a business piece, and this is one of the things that we use at Kid Central to determine the progress that we are making in all of our goals. And as a board member, I know one of the key things that all of us would like to be is accountable for what we do. Accountable and focused in on this...on our strategic plan, and this is what this book is really about. Businesses use it, and if you look at the front of the book, it will say for government and nonprofits. I know that the CEP of Marion County use it, Kid Central use it. Even when I was talking with Judy about it today, she pointed out to me that they also use the balanced scorecard. And a balanced scorecard will give us an opportunity to focus in on our plans, what we're doing, and how we can actually really move our dollars in the direction that we want them to go in terms of achieving our goals. I provided one of these copies to the superintendent, and I have enough copies for his staff in reference to his staff being educated in terms of that. And I also...also, you don't have to worry about it, Ms. Ely. I got them for you. Okay, I will provide copies of this strategy so we can look at what we are currently doing and how we can actually determine where we're going. One thing as a parent, and I've been getting this, one thing as a parent, at the end of the year, the worst thing I can see is my son walking in and saying, "Dad, I failed." But a balanced scorecard, what it will do, it will give us a chance. If we choose to do it, at every nine weeks, look at what all of our programs are doing. Are they meeting their particular goals? Are they meeting their particular goals in reference to what they want to accomplish? We can look at it as we progress through the year. And at the end, we will not be sitting here and saying, "I'm surprised that we did not address that." When I look at what we did, what we're doing at Kid Central, we can look at the number of kids that were arrested. We can look at the number of beds that we have available for kids, but the thing about it, we can make adjustments and saying, "We need to do something here. We could do something here." Why am I saying this? We can do this with our school system. If you look at our strategic plan here, it is outlining the things that we have deemed what the goals that we want to have. If you look at them, they are outlined here. But we need to have a scorecard. We need to have a scorecard to really tell us in what direction we're going. Either we moving well in one direction, or we going back, or we need to do something there, and we don't need to get it at the end of the year. Just for the record, I have business people that's willing to bring someone in and sit down and just talk with us about it. Just tell them how it is affecting business in that sense of accountability and focus. And I think, Board, when you have people ask you about accountability, we need to be able to point to some things and say, "This is where we are. This is the direction that we're going. This is where our funds are being spent." This is...there's an excellent text, and I would like to say this. Board, we need to move in that direction together. You know, it was really strange to me. We had a few minutes, and guys, we were...we were doing...we were saying some things in that few minutes, but everything that we have should be focused on what we are about. And I think this balanced scorecard would really help us do that. And I've talked with some of our employees and some of the people that's around, and they're looking for us at the end of a nine weeks to say, "Hey, you gotta be a B, a C, or D, or whatever," because this is what we are accustomed to, and I think as a school board, we can do this. Mr. Superintendent, I have books for your key people, and I will get books for you...for our board, and I will schedule...why don't you read it? I will schedule someone to just come in and try and educate us on developing a balanced scorecard so at the each of...at the end of each nine weeks, we will have an idea of what we're doing and where we're going. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. James. That's a great idea. I think we've really started some open...there's a lot of new people, and we've opened a lot of cans of worms, and it's hard when you open cans of worms, but I think it has started an open discussion, I hope, where we're welcoming that and this idea that you've got where we can evaluate things as we go along instead. Because one of the problems that I've always felt that we had here for many, many years as I watched from the outside was we sometimes didn't know when programs weren't working. You know, it was, we just kept doing it because we did that the year before and the year before that, and we didn't really know when we were on the right track or on the wrong track. And I've asked Mr. Langford for some information that possibly y'all don't know about, that where I have requested exactly a child that goes into intensive reading here at the end of third grade, and we follow him, and I want to see how many graduate. I want to see at what point do they get out? You know, and he's trying to get a...he's trying to put something together where he can...he can get that information. Ms. Ely, you might be able to help him. You might have some ways of getting this information that maybe Mr. Langford hasn't thought of, but he's got Rodney working on that. Because I want to know, if we've still got these kids in intensive reading in middle school, what we've been doing for four or five years has not been working if the same child is still there. And the teachers tell me that this is another wonderful thing that I've gleaned from the teachers, that it seems that the same kids are always there. If they're not getting out, we need to change course. I never thought it was a travesty to try any program in business. I never thought it was a travesty. But what happens in government that's different than business and private businesses, in government, it just gets covered up because no one wants to say they made a mistake. In private business, you can't afford to cover it up and keep moving. And so, Mr. Tomlin, I want to work with you. I want this to be the beginning of a time where we all start to work together. I've heard what I need to know from the teachers, and I've shared it, and we'll be talking some more as the budget goes along. But, Mr. James, thank you for your new idea, and I think that I hope everybody will bring new ideas and that we can work together and say, "Okay, it's okay. We didn't do the right thing. Let's stop doing it, and let's change gears." And something that an administrator told me, Mr. Tomlin, that I found very interesting this week, that the best reading program out there is Montessori. Montessori alphabet for five-year-olds.
Okay.
And so, I mean, that's a great administrator telling me that.
All right, thank you. One of the things I just would like to just share with everybody, we are starting...we're getting ready to move into another school year, and I would love for us to be on the same page and not be where we are at this point, you know, where we're looking at test scores. And I just wanted to make sure when we leave here, we get something positive left out of this meeting because it's important that we move in a direction. Hey, let's move on. I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received an alternative placement list for students through June sixth, two thousand fourteen. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Seeing none. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move them.
Move by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. The meeting is adjourned.
Got to vote.
Oh, got to vote. All the table signified by saying aye.
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 Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.